Recession meeting back into order. Open the floor to this tape, if you will, get us started on our strategic plan.
Okay. Good evening. Again, this is a work session, so it's meant to be an opportunity for commissioners to discuss and give feedback to staff. We have a little less than an hour. We need to allow a few minutes just to take a break between the next meeting, so hopefully Brenda will keep us on track. So if you recall, at the last meeting, at the last work session, we kind of kicked the strategic plan off, and at your seats, you should have a printout that has the title, Fiscal Year 2024 Strategic Plan. And those are my notes and the outline of the discussion that occurred at the last meeting. The first thing, there's three things I'm hoping to accomplish tonight. The first one is to review the mission statement. That's something you all had requested that we do. And then the second thing is to look at the measures. I've tried to come up with a measure for each of the objectives that you developed at the last meeting. And then finally, for you all to kind of go through each of the strategies that we've started to brainstorm. Some came from our discussion, and then some, I've gotten some feedback from Sheri from the economic development on some of the other ones. And so just getting your feedback on those items and any additions that you may have to those items. So I guess we'll start with the mission statement. I took a stab at it, just to, you know, give us a starting point from which to discuss. But of course, it's your mission statement, and I'm listening for any edits or changes that you would like to make. Do you all see, have you, do you all see this document at your seats? Okay.
So would you mind reading it, so that anyone watching is...
Oh, sure. Yes.
Watching it strange.
So the mission statement that's been drafted is, "Implement a flexible K through 14 workforce development program to prepare students for job opportunities that align with the county's economic development future, and implement quality-of-life programs to maintain and attract new residents." If you'll recall, the kind of the four objectives that we settled on, two of them were economic development, one was the new industrial park, and one was the workforce development program. And then there was also a discussion about the school facilities and improving those facilities, and that kind of fit in with economic development, but also tied in, I think, a little bit to the quality-of-life discussion we had. We think we... Low-hanging fruit, it's kind of a catch-all category. So I titled it Quality of Life and Online Projects. So the idea is to capture, you know, those four objectives that you all came up with in, you know, one sentence for the mission statement.
Do you have any particular definition for flexible?
Um, I guess the thinking behind that is that, you know, the economic development strategy that we determine today is probably going to be different from the one that we, you know, are looking at even just a few years from now. So the idea is that it's something that can move as our needs move for economic development.
Okay.
But if you don't like that word, then we can strike it. This is y'all's mission statement, so...
Flexible, whatever, variable, I don't know. What does the EDC mission statement say? How's it worded?
Vision.
Okay. I'm gonna go there then.
You got a vision statement in here?
So you're talking about the plan that was presented in the EDC report?
Well, what's online now? How does it correspond with what's being said here? Any similarities?
It's the Person County Economic Development Commission.
Okay. I think they could reflect each other in some way, it'd be good. I don't have any problem with this, but I, there's some segue between the two.
Yeah, we can work on that together. And I'll read the vision statement from the handout, but is that at your desk? And if you want to try to incorporate this, we can too. It says, "Person County Economic Development Commission is working to create opportunities for families and businesses to prosper and compete in a global economy." Is that better? Does that state it better? Then we could just go with that?
Yeah, I think we need to incorporate as much in this economic development thing, because that was probably as well-crafted as anything we're gonna...
That's why, you know...
Okay.
Going down that path, I think so.
Okay. We'll just, we'll use that vision statement they have there, then.
And you're gonna use vision or mission?
Well, I'll change it to mission or vision.
Okay.
Okay. Is there consensus around that?
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Okay. Looking at the, moving down the sheet there, the objectives again, I tried to just kind of simplify those. We, you know, we talked about these four. I just want to check in with you all, does that, does that meet your recollection of the items that we discussed? And are there any wording changes or any edits that you'd like to make?
On what the objectives?
On those, those four objectives. And I'll read them out for you. The first one was to improve school facilities. The second one was to implement a K-14 workforce development program. The third one was site an industrial park in the southern part of the county. And the fourth one, again, this was the catch-all, kind of, you referred to it as low-hanging fruit, but I'm calling it the quality-of-life and other ongoing projects. I didn't think low-hanging fruit would be a good objective, so...
I got a question on the industrial park. If we cite it in the southern part of the county, we're not gonna be able to facilitate it with sewer. Well, depending on what kind of business you bring in, because the capacity that there is pretty, pretty tight right now. You know, if we, and the recommendation I remember the city making was, you know, we need to stay as close to sewer lines that we already have. And most of that is in the north side of town.
Okay.
From some of the sites that I've gone G.I.S. and looked at, probably the most ready, readyable site is the one that Struck Masters, what's his name?
Chip Lofton.
Chip Lofton has, he's got about 100 acres on the backside of the old CNA plant, the border to college there, which has water, sewer, gas, everything you need right there. And you've got a couple of acreages down next to the elm plant that they just went in business on.
Well, we don't have the site, the location, it's just a concept.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought here, rather than saying southern part of the county.
Strike that.
Yeah, and so you would be, and use her word, flexible. We could go, we could go south. And there are some others.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I think if we leave that word out, we'll...
Okay. So if it's site a new industrial park, then leave it open. Okay.
Well, I don't know if we have to have an industrial park, because we just have to have industrial site inventory. Now, whether we buy it or partner with somebody else, I think we can accomplish it probably easier that way, as long as we get some commitment from some people that they'll participate, because, you know, for the most part, those sites wouldn't be used for anything else but industry. But I guess anything that's got water and sewer could be subdivided, but housing is continuing to go down, so I don't think that's gonna be any, anything coming up new, but, you know, I think we're starting to see an overflow from Durham into Person County, so it could possibly turn out to be that, but...
Would you want to say something like, increase industrial site inventory?
Yeah.
Okay.
At least that, yeah.
Or expand.
Yeah.
That'd be a better word.
Okay.
The acreage that we've got out there at the solar panel, they've got about 25 acres leased, I think, but they're only using about half of it. I don't know if they've got any intentions of using the rest of it or not, but just wondering if that would be worth investigating.
How many more years of lease on that?
Quite a few.
I wanna say 15, but I'm not certain.
Of course, now, it wouldn't, I think that whole section was about, what, 15, 16 acres? Or 25? I don't, I don't remember that total acreage.
Okay. What do you think about number four, the one I changed from low-hanging fruit to quality-of-life and other ongoing projects? Does that meet your, your thinking?
There was some suggestion last time by Commissioner Clayton about investing in infrastructure. So we may want to have quality-of-life and infrastructure enhancement, or maintain infrastructure. You know, that was about water lines and stuff.
Yeah, I moved that thought under the number three, which now we're calling expand industrial site inventory. Commissioner Clayton, was that what you were thinking? Was that along the terms of economic development, or were you thinking just generally, you know, maintaining infrastructure?
Yeah, anytime you can move forward, if you've got any kind of need and area and you run water and sewer to it, then you opened up not only commercial, but industrial, and it's not just residential. If you're just figuring on residential to pay for your water and sewer, then you're not gonna make it, you're barely gonna break even on that. So, you know, I look at it, I look at it as both. I mean, it's infrastructure, but it's economic development, too. You're only gonna go so far without water and sewer. They tried years ago, these giant sewer systems and different things with water, but most of the time, in the end, they end up getting water and sewer, particularly sewer.
Well, you can't maximize your land unless you got sewer.
That's right. You know, your lot.
You can get three, three lots to an acre.
You have a different, a whole lot size on the south end of the can, if you've got water and sewer, and you do if you don't have it.
Technically not in the water and sewer business.
Huh?
We're technically not in the water and sewer business.
No, we're not, but we got to partner with the city on what we can do with it.
Right.
If we put the line in there and lay it in there and say, here it is, you know, you...
You gotta get it back to their treatment plant.
Right. Right, oh, yeah.
Let me maybe throw a wrench in your machinery a little bit.
Okay.
I look around, and there were at least three of us and sometimes others. But I think about the enormous number of hours, thought, everything that was put into the SWOT analysis. Personally, I would like to see the recommendations of that, that study and analysis incorporated into these objectives. And they come from several different avenues, but it does touch just about every part of Person County life and business, so...
Does it have a list of objectives with dates and costs associated with it? Because I think, you know, the way to get, make the strategic plan be successful and be able to be implemented is to get down to a level of specificity. Thank you. I almost couldn't get that one out.
Well, it was in the original document along the way, there were several figures in there, right? Heidi and David. We did have numbers in there at one point.
We had some estimates, yeah.
And decided to take those out and leave it to the commission board, rather than, than from the EDC approach. But I think, again, the, the process was exhaustive. And I think you two in particular can relate to that, the time that was put in it. And we went back, and we went over, and then we recapped and went over. So it wasn't just a, you know, just a thought here and there and thrown all together. It was, it was an in-depth, again, we've had several hundred hours put into that thing, and I, and I would really like to see as much of that incorporated into this strategic plan. And you could pick out any of these items, and then we could plug in some numbers, but...
Sheri, do you want to talk about that, since it's economic development? Because I don't know all the specifics of that plan, other than what was presented. Do you know if there's that level of detail? That was one of the things that, when it was presented, was that it was an analysis rather than a plan? And EDC is also going through this process, where we had a half-day planning session a week ago to start forming the plan from the analysis. So we're kind of doing this in sync, and also in conjunction with the budget planning. So we did talk about several of these things last week, as far as the workforce development and the inventory development. So I do have some minutes here, if you want to talk about that.
Sure. So to be clear, Sheri provided the, kind of the strategies under number two and number three. And those came from her, that meeting you all had on Monday? So, which came from this plan?
That's what I said. I don't want to upset the process and what's going on here, but I think this is extremely important. The mega park is mentioned, the airport's mentioned, and we could maybe put some numbers in there from what we, what we had discussed and learned. Go ahead, Sheri.
Excuse me, before we go into further, do we think we need to vote on anything tonight? Or we just...
I don't think so.
I mean, since we've only got three people here, but...
It's just a work session anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so for the items that Civil had listed under number two, the measure was the number of sixth graders enrolled in workforce development program, and the number of PCC students enrolled in the workforce development program. For A, for funding a workforce development feasibility study, we have in the past received proposals for doing a workforce development plan, and we do have funds in the current budget, budget at an amount of $25,000 to move forward with that. And what we determined at the last EDC meeting was that Commissioner Powell was going to form a workforce subcommittee to try to move that along and choose a plan and get that in the works for this budget year. So that takes care of A and C, A, B, and C. For item D, encourage the formation of a private nonprofit to allow for private sector investment into a shared modern facility. That's something that has come up with needing an advanced technology center that would allow to pool resources and could be used by not only the community college, but six through 12 or K through 12 in industry as well. Any additional comments on number two before we move on to number three?
You under the objectives, is that where you...
Yes.
Strategies, number three.
Oh, okay.
So I just went through number two, A through D.
Do y'all have any items you want to add to those strategies? Or do you want to just use the, the items that Sheri's group comes up with? That's kind of what I was hearing you say, is that correct?
You know, once you form your subcommittee and some others, then some thoughts will come out of that to go inside and work those out. I mean, I'm fine with those.
Okay.
And now, okay, we're using K-14 and not K-12.
Right.
Stick with that.
Is that, is that what the board wants to do? That's what...
I don't know of the others. I've said that for years. It needs to be. We need to teach our kids that, you know, on high school graduation night, we still got, and maybe if they have already had dual enrollment, they may only have one more year, or they certainly could have two additional years right down the street here. So I think the concept is good. I think that's what, what did they do in Virginia? Was it K, it was K-12, wasn't it? Or K-14? They promoted the additional two years?
Yes.
Right, yeah, okay. And I'm fine, too, if everybody else is.
Okay, so you've already talked a little bit about site development, but there were a few other things I had noted here. For identifying economic development opportunities and target sectors, I do have in the proposed ED department budget, $23,000 to do a feasibility and target sector study. The county already owns about 25 or so acres adjacent to the airport. It was purchased with grant funds, and so it does have to be used in the pursuit of aeronautical business or industry. But we could do phase-one audits on that property for 7,500 or less. I do not have that budgeted for next year, I just got that number today.
How many acres did you say? I'm sorry.
About 25, 26, 27, somewhere in that.
Are they all on one side or one end, or...
It's between Kate's Mill Road and the airport, so it was formerly a...
Where their last fault plant was.
Right.
Yeah. All right, now, was there, now, the phase-one study you're talking about is environmental study?
Right.
All right, was anything done when they tore that place down and moved it away? No study done?
I'm not aware of anything.
So we don't know if they contaminated it or not?
Right, that would be the intent of doing the study, is that. And also, there's a small pond on that property to see why that was built and the history of the site.
Was there any language and, was there ownership or partnership with anybody to clean that up after it was, after they moved?
Did they ever cooperate the thing?
Sure.
I don't think they did.
I really don't.
I think they got everything there, and the economy come along, and I don't think they actually, I don't think they actually did anything with it, but I may be completely wrong.
Could you check on that, Heidi?
Yes.
Okay.
In looking for new sites, we might want to look at a rail site to supplement or complement the mega site. For item C, establishing a fund for water sewer improvements beyond existing capacity. You talked about this a little bit, but I agree that, you know, that would need to be a budget worked out with the city. Then for it...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. You would establish a fund in, in the EDC budget or the county budget?
The county budget.
Okay.
If you established a utility fund, would that be...
You already got a water and sewer fund, don't you?
We have one.
Didn't say we already got one.
We did have one.
I asked, you had a utility fund, is that, that's earmarked for water and sewer?
And we have that in place now.
Yeah, I think we just need to contribute to it.
What's the title of it?
Water and sewer, Water Infrastructure Fund, I think. Water Line Expansion Fund.
What we've been using...
Is it about 40-some thousand in it now?
Well, the city is supposed to be paying us on a quarterly basis, a share of our revenues, and we haven't gotten a payment from them since, I don't know, over probably June or July.
I knew they always lag behind on it.
It's the point of contention.
Yeah, that's, that's revenue collected from the county citizens, that double the P out there. So we get some portion of that back for future water and sewer install. I mean, that's how we ran the line out to the patrol station.
We run the line, we pay to build the line with those funds, and then the city takes over and, you know, provides, right.
Yeah. I contribute to it every month.
So we do have that money, we're just not putting in a general fund contribution, we're just using the revenue sharing as our source.
That can only be used for that.
That's right.
So if we put money into that, it's froze. Can we go back and take it back out?
Um, I'll have to check on that, I'm not sure.
I think we can.
I don't think you could either.
Now, I don't know if you put general fund money in there, which you could do, but I know that if you put the water and the sewer money in there, it came from the water and sewer.
That, that can't be changed, so if you're talking about...
See, they can't be taken back out, because those grants and those loans that they got for that water line required that it be reinvested in, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought you were asking about putting a general fund contribution.
I was.
So that could have some flexibility, but I'll have to check.
Right.
The funds that we get from the city, that's the revenue sharing, is absolutely tied.
They're not flexibility, right.
Correct.
It's got to be spent for water and sewer.
Yes, sir.
Or sewer.
Well, I think establishing a fund is necessary, it's needed, but I think it needs to be separate.
Well, and we've already, we already have a fund, so I think it's more about making a contribution to, an ongoing contribution to that fund.
Do you want to make an annual contribution in your budget from the general fund?
I would like to, yeah.
And I'll find out what the balance is in that fund, and the actual name of the fund.
We don't know who's on first.
All right, find out. Also, if the money's put in there, can it come back out?
Okay.
Otherwise, you may be wasting your time, put money there, and some other board take it out.
That would be written into the language of the, the fund anyway, wouldn't it, Heidi?
Well, I hope so.
Yeah.
But, you know, we can't bind future boards. Well, I don't know.
At that side.
Can I go...
I don't see why not.
I mean, you can inform with debt, but I mean, if you start sticking money around, that's what I want her to find out, if we, if...
I'll find it.
Okay.
If I can go back to B for a second, what we found out about that land, when we looked at that previously, was that it had been purchased with federal funds, and therefore we could not use it for a private business expansion with there.
Which one is that?
The concrete place next to the airport, Montgomery Drive. We were limited in how we could use it because it had been purchased with federal dollars, so it...
It might be a good place to put the hangar.
What I was told was that as long as it was... What I was told was that as long as it was aeronautical use.
Okay.
Since it's, since it's somewhat hamstrung, we might, might-
That may be true, Sherri, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I remember we did something with environmental study out there.
From the office?
Yeah. It's been a long time.
I don't know that you've got to be close to the office, because that's going to be- I'm thinking about security, and I'm thinking about getting the airplane out there.
I think the architect has already located a site for the hanger that's right up on the, on the runway. You know, it's in line with the other hangars, so.
Which is what you'd want with the project.
Okay.
Okay, and then going back to citing an industrial development location. Item D, you would want to include that and transportation and new land use plan, which I think price tag was from Lori's proposal.
And that's in your, that's, that will be in your budget already, so.
In the budget on CIP?
In the regular, in the regular operating budget.
Which one is that?
We, I talked to Lori today about that, and she said that's definitely, you know, transportation is definitely something that would be addressed in the land use plan. And if we wanted to talk about that, economic development and transportation together, then that's something that consultant would be able to, to research for us.
And then finally, that, another role that that private nonprofit could serve would be to allow private sector investment into public-private partnerships, like you mentioned, for site development. And along those lines, we could do an opportunity zone seminar to make sure that investors are aware of the parts of the county that fall into those zones and, and maybe pique some interest in some of those sites where we do have the infrastructure.
I'm sure with your timing on your board's completion of these type of strategies. Chairman?
You mean within the five-year plan?
Well, just-
Or to get it in?
To get it into this, I'm, my goal was to, you know, have two more work sessions and then, you know, put dollar amounts next to these strategies, the ones that we could.
Work session, can we?
So.
Work out some and communicate with everybody. Evening.
So does that seem possible? Okay.
Because that'll be what?
May, what's that first meeting in May? Put that date in front of you.
Six?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, May sixth, May sixth.
It is, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Jeffers, we're talking about the strategic plan and this handout that you should have at your desk, it's like this, it's got strategic. Do y'all want to talk about, can we go back to the first strategy, the improve the school facilities? We haven't really spoken about that. The measure there would be percent of deferred maintenance projects complete. That's number one. Started to jump around, but I'm just going with the flow of the conversation. We did, as you all know, you approved hiring a debt consultant to help us work through that, the big request that we're going to have from the school. So we'll be coming before you multiple times. Actually, the consultant will be coming before you multiple times this upcoming fiscal year to kind, to work through some of the, not only just that debt, but, but primarily initially with some of the policies that are going to, that are going to help you structure that debt. So I put that there as, as A, as, you know, as kind of developing that plan. And then-
Is that going to be part of our budget?
It'll be for next year.
Yes. So we've kind of pushed that big, big deferred maintenance, 31 million-ish off until fiscal year '21. We're doing some deferred maintenance, you'll see in the CIP tonight, we're doing some deferred maintenance this year, which has taken away a little bit of that 31 million. But we really needed to get that consultant on board, get the policies established, you know, develop the, the funding mechanism before we can fully tackle that, that 31 million. So that's looking like fiscal year '21 when we'll do that.
And potentially, a bond issue might be settled by the state.
Yeah, timing was good with that as well, so. So those are really, those are the two, the two items under the improve the school facilities was getting the debt consultant going and then implementing, you know, the projects and the funding mechanism that they recommend. Are there other specific?
For next year? Um, let me look at the CIP real quick. Can I give you a total? It looks like next year, we're projecting 678,000 for the schools.
Maybe I have a idea, but I'll go ahead and start setting money aside.
Well, the, that's what the debt consultant is helping us do, identify funding sources. We've had one meeting with him, and they had some very creative ideas of taking some untapped funds that we currently have in place that we could apply towards a new capital fund for, for these large projects. And it would also behoove us to do some financing because they're so large and our debt service ratio is so low. So as we work through some options there, we'll be bringing, you know, multiple scenarios for the board to consider in terms of spending and funding for school needs. It's just still pretty early on, and there's a lot of moving parts with the legislature. Probably saw they're looking at doing some waivers of the class size requirements, so there's a lot up in the air still on, on being able to prioritize those needs.
But the consultant is really going to walk us through that whole process. So you all be very familiar with how that's going to happen and how we're going to be able to fund that 31 million.
And don't get hung up on that number.
Yes. It's a moving target.
That's already changed a lot.
Yes. So.
They gave us multiple scenarios, the schools did, that had price tags high above that and some less than that.
Any, any other specific?
So we on three out of four, y'all already gone through?
We've kind of jumped around a little bit. I'm talking about, currently, right now, I'm talking about strategy number one, the improve the, improve school facilities. And my, my request tonight is to talk about the mission statement, which Commissioner Jeffers, we decided to use the vision statement from the EDC presentation that Mr. Reynolds gave you all in December, I believe.
You have a copy of that.
Yes.
Page seven.
Thank you, Franklin. There it is.
Page seven.
And from, once we finished that part, we kind of, we jumped into the two items that were focused on economic development. So that was item two and three. Two is the workforce development, and then the third one is the expand the industrial site. Where that's what we've decided to change it to. It was the site and industrial park in the southern part of the county, so.
So that's the one that drew my attention, because we labeled the southern part of the county. And I know a few years ago, we had looked at this, and it was very hard for us to find tracts of land that we were talking about to formulate one.
Right.
I mean, has that changed? And I wanted to make sure that we were staying on this four to five-year, see something done timeframe. And out of all these objectives and strategies, I mean, are they within that timeframe?
So the idea is that, yes, all of the strategies would be between the next, you know, within the next five years. Some of them, we're not going to know what the date is, because, for example, you know, Commissioner, Commissioner Powell is going to have a subcommittee to work on regional workforce development. And out of that subcommittee, there might be ideas that get added to this plan, but we won't know that until that kind of focus group is complete.
So will this subcommittee include people in our region or just per the county vote?
It will be a regional project.
So it's going to be, it's going to be a work in progress, but yes, all of the strategies will be.
Okay, so out of these strategies, which are our one or two? Once we said we're kind of our heavy hitters, but our top two?
So the, the, we, the discussion last time was around four, the four that are listed under objectives. And that was improve the school facilities, implement a K-14 workforce development program. And then we changed the third one to, because the other folks didn't like that, the southern part of the county either. So we, we changed it to expand industrial site inventory, which is a little bit more general and doesn't tie it to a certain part of the county. And then the fourth one was the quality of life and other ongoing projects. And then we've just kind of been working through each of those objectives and coming up with strategies that are more specific, that break it down to accomplish those objectives. And if y'all have new ones to add, we're going to add. We talked about Sherri's group really focusing on the strategies from two and three, because they're doing a similar type plan concurrently with the, you know, the same time that we are.
School board member asked me, had we, had I seen the, I guess they sent some information over about some of the stuff that we had asked for when the chairman and I met with them about options and savings? Are we just waiting for a later work session?
No, we were asking for that so that we could provide it to our debt consultant, and they could start looking at some, developing some models that they could bring back to the board. So at this point, we've sat down and had one meeting with our debt consultant last week, gave them those scenarios and walked them through our CIP. And they're going to be bringing back some policies for the board and start working on providing, you know, multiple scenarios based on what the schools have provided. So that was given to me as a not for public consumption, but use this to help us develop, you know, some options to consider. And that's kind of where we're at with that.
Still asking a lot of who is.
Well, he asked me, have I seen it? Or have we seen it yet? And I told him no. So I didn't know, you know.
It wasn't meant to be a board discussion item. It was something the superintendent had given me to share with the debt consultants to flesh out some possibilities.
He must have shared with his board if I was asked.
Yes, yes, he did share with his board. Is that something that you had an expectation that we would discuss?
I understand what you're doing with it, but if I'm asked a question, I'm going to find out why.
Are there any other items under the strategies for improve school facilities? I feel like, you know, improving school facilities, you know, it definitely includes deferred maintenance, but there's, there's other, you know, lots of other room under that objective, and I just want to make sure it captures what you all had in mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's, that's enough.
Okay.
Simple, but.
But important.
Yeah, extremely.
Okay. If we can jump down to number four. This was the catch-all category of what we were calling the low-hanging fruit. And again, I've labeled it here, quality of life slash ongoing projects. And the measure here is to do an annual survey about quality of life in the county. So there would be some general questions on that survey about how citizens rate quality of life. And then if we were to do specific projects that we have listed here, we would get citizen feedback on how those projects, you know, were implemented and what their feelings were about how it improved quality of life. Some of the, there's a, I'll go through each of the A through F items. This is what I noted during our discussion last time. Researching options for implementing a litter collection program, that was something, I believe Commissioner Perrier mentioned. That's something that we could work on this coming year, looking into what the options could be, and then potentially funding it the next fiscal year. The next one is staff to conduct analysis of surrounding counties billboard regulations. I spoke with Lori about this one, I believe Commissioner Jeffers asked this question, and she did offer that, you know, the best way to begin this would be to look around and see what other counties have in terms of regulations about billboards, and then do a presentation to you all to see if you wanted to make some text amendments. Does that meet your, your needs, Commissioner Jeffers, in terms of the billboard discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it was only mentioning me by one citizen.
Okay.
But it's okay for us to look at it, but I don't, you know, sometimes you start changing stuff, you have unintended consequences. I just mentioned it because one mentioned it to me.
Okay. Well, again, this is y'all's plan, and if you don't want to do any of these, or, you know, you want to change them, you know, this is the time to do it. C is to fund a long-term solid waste study. There was some discussion at our last work session about convenience centers and potentially curbside. So that's on here, as something that could be looked at in fiscal year '21.
Have we not heard that discussion before?
We have, but it came up at the work session, so I just wanted to make sure that it was captured. I think Commissioner Perrier brought it up, so.
Have you heard back from the Landfill people?
I've had two follow-up meetings, and they're working on a proposal to bring back to the board and close session at your first May meeting. Is that right, first, first one in May?
Actually, I think it's-
We gave them a brainstorm session.
I think it's the next one.
I don't know what they're looking to bring back yet.
That may very well take care of itself from there.
I think it's the next, next meeting is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is.
Then there's other meetings, yeah.
Yes, it's at your next April meeting.
Yeah.
In two weeks, that we'll have a closed session with, with Republic.
Okay, and we've got just a few minutes. The next one was create a line of the tax bill that shows the number of pennies that support the school's operating expenses. I'm not sure, I think Commissioner Powell, that was something that you were interested in, and I wanted to get some clarification on that. Is that something that we could add to the tax flyer? You know, each year, we have an insert that kind of details how the tax dollars are spent. Is that what you were thinking? Or are you thinking of a specific school tax?
Mm-hmm, school tax is what I was thinking.
That's what you're thinking.
The other is not very clear. We've had this discussion for years, and it depends on how you plug in the numbers is what you get, and it's always misleading. And if it's on the tax bill, then it's very clear.
I think you're asking for what is the local funding from the general fund for schools, not the sales tax, not the lottery, but just straight out of the general fund.
Right.
But do you want to enact a separate tax that's, you know, that would be specifically for the schools? Or do you just want to show that?
Yes, you could do that.
Yes. And I spoke with Russell about it briefly, and he was going to, you know, look at the process that entails. I mean, it would be kind of like, I don't, kind of like the VFDs, and then it would show up as a separate item on your bill.
Well, historically, it comes out a big number every, every budget year, percentage-wise. Very good.
I think what you-
I think what you maybe alluding to is if you can come up with a percentage or establish a certain amount to go to the school, but then you take the flexibility away from it.
It's like what Orange County has.
Yeah. There are other?
I thought what you were trying, maybe I misunderstood, maybe I thought what you were trying to do is, okay, if you put nine million, ten million dollars and then penny raises four hundred thousand, you were going to tell me how many cents of your property tax went to the schools? Is that not what I was missing?
That's, that is definitely something that we can do, and we can easily do that on a tax flyer.
Did that look simple to me?
Yes.
It would say, okay, we spend.
Five pennies or whatever it is. Yeah.
You're trying to treat it like a five tax.
Well, yeah, somewhat.
You're actually designing a certain portion of the budget to the school.
And it's very clear to the public where the money goes.
Well, that should move out of quality of life then.
That would, yes. So you're talking about something different than I understood. Okay, is there consensus to do that, to look into that? Get Russell to, I guess, present something on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not for me.
Okay.
Process, but I'm not saying I'm in favor of doing any type of separate tax.
For schools. Okay.
Can't say that right now.
Okay. But you would be okay if Russell came in?
I would be a separate tax, at least I did.
I thought that's what you were talking about.
That's what, yeah, that's what.
Like a, like a fire tax, but it's a school tax for schools.
That's right, yeah.
I was talking about just showing it on the bill.
Right, two different things, yeah.
But Commissioner Powell is talking about a separate tax.
That's the discussion we've had all these years.
I'm fine with seeing the process, but saying I'm for it is two totally different things right now.
Okay.
Especially including in a strategic plan.
Right, okay. All right, well, we can hear from Russell.
Again, it's just a work session.
Yep. Okay, and I'll move that one. The next two were collaborating with TDA for marketing and then collaborating, collaborating with the Uptown Roxburgh group. I think we're getting close on time, but are there other items that you all want to add to, specifically to the, the fourth one, the quality of life slash ongoing projects?
I'll take care of what we talked about.
Okay. All right. If you have any other ideas, send them my way and I'll include them. Thank you.
All right, we'll have to call recess until seven o'clock.
Call the meeting to order. Mr. Powell, if you'll lead us in some divine intervention.
If you desire, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the beautiful day and the gift of life that you give us. May we attempt to do our best to reflect your ways, your wills, as we go about the business of our county tonight. I'd leave these prayers to you in your son's name. Amen.
Please rise and face the flag. Oh, man, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody need to adjust their agenda? Not a...
Move for approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. All right, I need to read a proclamation. Proclamation by Person County Board of Commissioners on the Week of the Young Child, whereas Person County Partnership for Children and other local organizations in connection with the National Association of Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 8th through 12th, 2019. And whereas by calling attention to the need for high-quality early childhood services for all children and families within our community and state, these groups hope to improve the quality and availability of such services. And whereas the future of Person County depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to our young children today. Now therefore, the Person County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 12th, 2019, as the week of the young child in Person County and urge all citizens to recognize and support the needs of young children in Person County, adopted this first day of April, 2019.
You have Charlene...
Charlene...
Whit here, program coordinator of the partnership. I don't know if she's accepted it.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right. I need a motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Sally Bone.
Good evening. Back in June of last year, a citizen wanted to build a house kind of behind where his other family had already had their houses. And that enacted our third home on the same driveway section of our address and ordinance, which requires that driveway be named. We've been working with the family since June of last year. They've had multiple deaths in the family, unfortunately, and some disagreement about the name. But we did finally get a unanimous agreement that they would prefer the name of their private road to be Heston Road. Again, that was unanimous. That name is compliant with our ordinance. And as you know, this public hearing is required by North Carolina General Statute. We did publish in the newspaper and a sign also appeared in the general area of the road to be added. Any questions?
You got any comments from anybody?
None whatsoever, sir.
Move to come out of public here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any approve?
Move to approve the request.
Got a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have a new rule. Any informal comments?
Any informal comments?
No, sir, no one's on that.
All right. The consent agenda, is anything in there that we need to pull out and talk about?
The company we hired for the audit, did we sign like a, how many year contract?
I believe a three-year contract. And we've had our first year, so it's heading into the second year.
Move for approval. All right, any discussion? I've got one question. Part E said you're increasing the thresholds?
Yes.
What are they now?
Amy, do you want to take that one? I should pull it up real quick.
We have a threshold, minimum threshold for, excuse me, my brain. For requisitions.
Tell you to start standing.
I know, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. The minimum threshold for PO is $500 and has been so since...
Ninety-three.
At least nineteen ninety-three. So as costs have risen, so have the, so has the volume of POs and requisitions that we have to process. So we're hoping that you all will approve the increase that will help lessen the amount that we have to approve, but it also would be in line with increasing prices since nineteen ninety-three.
So is something going from three hundred to five hundred? Or you talked about five hundred to seven fifty because the way it reads is like you're increasing thresholds to five hundred and seven fifty?
Right, so we're talking about two different things. One, we're talking about...
Daily deposit.
The daily deposit, which we're asking to increase the minimum that you have to, that each department has to have before they make a deposit from two fifty to, I think it's five hundred. That is basically something that state has changed recently that allows us to adopt that. And so we're, that basically, you know, keeps departments from having to necessarily go every day, especially if they are ones that collect consistently over $250. So that helps them to manage their time a little bit better if we can lessen that requirement. The other is, is the PO threshold from five hundred to seven fifty. So it's been five hundred since nineteen ninety-three and we're asking that you increase that to seven fifty, which also is in line with the threshold for fixed assets, which is seven hundred and fifty and above. So it kind of helps to, you know, departments have always been a little confused with all these different thresholds, especially the fixed asset threshold, the minimum PO threshold. Now we're sort of making those the same so that you don't have as many thresholds to remember. It's just easy to know that if you hit that seven fifty, you've got to do a requisition, but you also, it is possible that that is a fixed asset. So it's sort of to simplify that, but also to help lessen the burden of what we're having to administer for requisitions.
All right, if you got ways of securing this money before it gets to the bank?
Oh, yes, we have that now. So each department is required to have a place to safe-keep those, their deposits. And we audit that cash every year and we also make sure that those safekeeping methods are still in place.
Would it be likely more than a, the next day? Would it run as much as two or three days before?
Potentially, I would say, you know, we have departments that have more cash coming in than other departments. We have some departments that might only make two or three deposits a month. They just, they're not big cash collectors in those departments, so it just varies.
Okay, so you feel safe in that money being exposed for additional time?
I do, simply because I know that they, I know the safekeeping that they have in place for each department. So I'm very confident that that's, that's not going to be an issue.
Any more discussion? Got a motion to accept? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any approve?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. York.
Commissioners, this proposed policy was presented at your last meeting on March 18th and was tabled to come back for further discussion at this meeting. This is a proposed mobile device policy that would impact Person County government employees and would transition our employees from a stipend-based cellphone system to a county-owned cellphone. And the reasons that we talked about for doing this is that we're modeling this after best practices to help us manage the mobile devices better, preserve public information, protect individuals' privacy rights. The phones would be assigned to particular positions, so if an employee transitions employment with the county, it's easy for us to shut down the device and prevent further access to county resources. Most other local governments have, are in the process or have already transitioned from a stipend-based system over to a government-owned phone. There is a financial impact to implementing this and that is that as we went through to evaluate the business use for each position, we have added approximately twenty-five additional users who are already using their cellphones to conduct business and the laws and regulations would require that they be compensated for doing so, that they could not do that with their personal phone. So when we add those additional users, we're spending about one hundred and twenty-one thousand now in stipends. We would go to about one hundred and forty-four thousand with approximately two hundred users and that also accounts for elected officials transitioning to this plan. However, this is a plan and a program that would be in place for full-time county employees, so it would, you have the authority to exempt yourselves or any other position from this policy if that's the board's desire. I also have...
What kind of problems are you having with employees and phones?
Well, I mentioned that we're having employees who are using their personal phones to conduct county business and not being compensated for that. That violates some fair labor standards rules. I also have issues with, as I mentioned, when an employee leaves us and has access to confidential county information, we do not have the ability to wipe their phone of that because it's their private phone. If we have a request for public information, it would take staff sorting through both private and business text messages and emails to redact anything that was private. So there's a, there's quite a commingling of those issues that would, you know, present itself if a request were received. And also our stipend, our stipend policy has been in place for a number of years and the cost of cellphones has come down. So we are, are not paying a competitive rate anymore with those stipends either. We also, with these new cellphones, would have hotspots within the phones, so we are able to eliminate the need in some cases for Mi-Fi devices. These cellphones could eliminate that, so there's also some cost savings in eliminating those. I have...
It would save you a whole lot of money if somebody would ask for some record footage.
Explain, I'm not sure I'm following you.
Public record.
Yeah, public record.
Right.
Definitely save your time.
It would save me a lot of time, yeah, and staff resources. Because I would simply hand over my county-owned device and everything on there would be public information potentially versus the commingling of, you know, a private business, private and business on the same device. So it's cleaner in that regard for the employee.
Move for approval.
What is the motion?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I think Commissioner Clayton made a motion for, to move for approval.
To go ahead with... Well, you mentioned exemption, or you mentioned full-time employees. Is that the way it's going?
His motion would be to do it as presented, which would include us.
All right, is this just a full-time employee? Well, that's what I want to clarify.
Right now, it's just speaking to anybody who has the need for a phone to conduct county business. And there is a list of criteria on the second page of the policy in which we evaluated whether or not our full-time employees would qualify for iPhone.
So for example, not every full-time might qualify, but even maybe some part-time particularly, maybe DSS, where we have part-time on-call workers?
If they met this criteria, particularly in DSS where they're out of the office, they're taking calls after hours, making home visits, you know, any of those could qualify them, I believe.
Is this going to cover everybody? Or we got some loose ends?
Well, we have thoroughly vetted this.
You won't know until they frizzle.
Yeah, we have been working on this for, I don't know, nine or ten months with our management team and with our department heads.
All right, any more discussion? You know any more than you just did? Uh huh. Okay. All right, motion to accept as presented is on the floor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any approve?
Three to one. Thank you.
All right. And number seven.
All right. Commissioners, I have before you a resolution to authorize the renewal of our fixed-based operator agreement at the Person County Airport. This is a ten-year lease and agreement that we entered into in 2009, so it is up for renewal. And as you well know, the county contracts with Red Mountain Aviation to run the day-to-day operations out at the Person County Airport. So we are asking for the board to consider renewal of this for an additional ten-year term, which would begin in March and go to February of 2029. The concessions of the agreement that we have in place remain consistent with this one. The rental rate stays the same and the fuel flowage fee also remains the same. Are there questions that I can answer for you?
Ray, you got anything you want to add?
No, should we just keep it the same as it has been in the past? And Bill Tugus appears to be satisfied with that, as I reviewed it with him already.
All right. Any questions on this matter?
You happy with it?
Yeah, I think it's worked pretty good for ten years. I don't know if anything that we really get seen.
It's run very well. In fact, I think we've got an exceptional person there because of the hours he puts in out there. He's not a forty-hour employee or worker.
No, no.
It's pretty much unlimited. Anytime, day or night, weekend, holidays, it doesn't matter. So I think we, we get out of money as well as that very, very easily.
All right, we got a...
Move for approval.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any approve? All right, Mr. Labarre, if you would.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here to ask for your approval. We are looking to operate on selected holidays as described in your abstract. The ones we would not operate on are Independence Day, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving, Black Friday, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. This would be for dialysis patients, which is pretty much consistent with their operation.
Really would not be operating?
We would not be operating, but we would operate on any other county-approved holiday. DeVita is closed on New Year's Day, Thanksgiving, Black Friday, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. They do operate on Independence Day, but we figured that there probably be not many people that would want to operate on that day. And really, the main thing that we're looking for is your approval on the rates. County manager and assistant county manager, we sat down and decided to propose a higher fee to cover the cost of operating on a holiday. So we're looking for your approval for the rates and to be able to operate on those selected days for dialysis patients. We've talked with DeVita, be about twenty patients that would be taken care of that day and they all have agreed to want to ride. This will all be grant-funded, so all these guys are under a grant or Medicaid, so it wouldn't cost a citizen any money. This is covered by contracted services.
Other than just operating expenses.
What's that?
Other than just operating.
Correct, but no general fare.
All right, have a motion?
Move for approval.
You're on a roll.
I'm just going to make a motion like that. It'd make Glenn sweat, it's about his first time coming up here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Third.
Third?
For Pat's?
Yep.
All right, got a motion to...
He's on a roll too.
I figured you'd like it, this money, extra and extra money, so.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any approve? All ready?
Thank you.
We did come about the signs on the side of the bus, didn't we?
That was at your last meeting, yes.
Ms. York?
Yes. I'm presenting your recommended capital improvement plan for the next five years for your consideration tonight, commissioners. As you know, this is your planning tool for implementing your large capital projects and the projects listed in here meet the threshold of $50,000 or greater. And this really helps pave the way for the recommended budget because it's providing an estimate of the funding that we need, not only for capital, but there are also some impacts to operating budgets as well. And so although it's a five-year plan and we're projecting out our needs for five years, we're only asking the board to commit to the funding for the upcoming fiscal year. This, tonight, is just the first attempt to present these to you, get them in front of you to generate discussion. We'll be back at your April fifteenth board meeting for adoption at that time. So if there are questions or additional information that we can bring back to you on the fifteenth, we would love to hear that. We mentioned in the strategic planning session that we're working with our debt consultants, our financial advisors. And so the large expensive projects that the schools are facing are being vetted through that process first. So this CIP is really prioritizing economic development, makes some efficiency upgrades, and addresses some safety needs at both the community college and the public schools. So I'd like to walk you through some of the highlights of the document and I have Amy here to help answer questions that you might have. I'll just start by, on page seven is a list of your recently completed capital projects. If you want to take a peek at what you have funded to date that have been completed. And that's followed by a list of ongoing and current projects that you'll find on page eight. And then if you'll turn...
Okay, can we ask questions as we go?
Yes, please.
All right, wireless broadband. Which one is predicted for FY twenty-one and why? I thought we were, they were all pretty much on line to start around the same time.
Um, no, we still have Bushy Fork and Bethel Hill to come on. Bethel Hill, fingers crossed, going to be done before fiscal year twenty begins, hopefully this fiscal year, but it's being conservative in this situation. And then Bushy Fork is definitely going to be twenty, possibly twenty-one.
I went on the website and looked at the map that they predict they will be able to cover. Are there things to do in some of those areas that are still kind of outlying that they can do to help?
Yes.
With the equipment server right on there?
Yes, part of our agreement with them includes growing the network organically, which means them putting in microcells, what they call microcells, based on demand. So the network will grow as they're able to get a better hold on where additional demand is. And I forget what the threshold is. I want to say it's around seven to ten users. So if there's a group, a cluster of seven to ten users who confirm that they will access the product, then they will install a microcell, which is like a telephone pole, slightly higher than a telephone pole, with some additional equipment to get out there.
Is that down with feet on?
I, that's beyond my level of expertise.
Okay, then if you'll turn with me to pages twelve and thirteen, that's the first two pages of the grid that we use to... At the top half, you'll see we identify the sources of revenue to support the projects that we have on our grid. And then the next half of that is all of the county facility projects. And if you'll look with me at the column labeled Planning Year 1920, those are the dollar amounts that we're going to need the board to commit to or adjust for us in the upcoming fiscal year. So you're only appropriating the funds for that particular fiscal year. Some of the project highlights for county projects include the largest one, a new executive hangar at the airport. You'll find that on page thirteen. Right now, we're identifying a cost estimate of approximately 3.6 million. About 1.3 million of that funding can come from our airport project fund balance. And another large project is the final construction of our fiber at 789,000. You'll find your projects for the community college and the public schools on page fourteen. Some highlights that you'll see include some ADA improvements at four of our elementary schools for just shy of 400,000. An upgrade to the fire alarm system at Southern Middle for about 200,000 and some painting. And then at the community college, we have some technology upgrades for 100,000. A generator, a payment on the pod building. And then we have put in a feasibility study for an advanced manufacturing and STEM center, which would support our economic development efforts. The feasibility study is 54,000. That is one of the projects that we took off. That one, there's a list of those. The price tag was, was quite large. They were estimating $32 million, well, almost $33 million for that facility. So we'd like to consider funding a feasibility study first. They were wanting to purchase new land and build a new building for that. So at this point, I'm just recommending a feasibility study and not the larger project with the cost that big.
Did you see the state was looking at buying land?
Yes, sir.
Should we even...
They didn't identify anything yet. They had mentioned... Yeah, they had mentioned somewhere on the 501 main corridor, but...
Should we even fund a feasibility study if we don't know if that's what we want to do?
Yes, that is a fair question, Commissioner.
I mean, the study could come back and say, yes, it's a go, but if we don't have 32 million or whatever it is they're envisioning, it's a no-go anyway, so.
That's fair.
All we need to do is ride about 25 miles north or northeast and take a look at what's going on.
Higher tax rate, more revenue?
I agree totally with what you're saying about the dollar amount, but we are 20 years at least behind Danville and South Boston and in education related to the needed current workforce. So I don't know about this, that much money.
We had discussed a STEM project before when we were looking at things to do out there in Helena. And then it kind of vamped from a STEM to a early college.
Yeah.
We didn't hear anything else about STEM, at least I hadn't. And so, I don't know, I'm hesitant to say put it in there for 55,000. We don't even know if we're going to do this, do a building. Now, if we're talking about in our strategic planning session, we've been trying to incorporate advanced manufacturing from six through whatever, I assume we were talking about how we could do that in the schools that we have, not setting something apart, but...
I'd be happy to invite Dr. Senegal to your next meeting if you'd like to have her flush that out in a little better detail.
Well, I think Mr. Newell has seen what's available in South Austin.
Yeah, we've gone up there.
In the way of advanced manufacturing, and I haven't, I've seen Danville, but I'm sure they're along the same lines, but...
The ones over there, are they adult education or are they incorporating in the...
Bure enrollment and adult ed.
What exactly is this feasibility study supposed to show?
Whether or not we should proceed with developing a whole nother STEM center and workforce development center.
Yeah, I'll just go a little bit of that. It's kind of part needs study, so determining, you know, what the level of need, how many students might be enrolled, that type of, those types of questions. And then, also a part, you know, facility need. So, how many classrooms, how big, you know, what would the cost be per square foot, that type of kind of nuts and bolts analysis, too. So, it's kind of two pieces, from my understanding.
But we can go out here next year and study the cost of construction, and if we're not going to do it for 10 years down the road, those numbers are out the window anyway. I mean, you know, I just want us to have, I mean, are we committed to doing something like this before we spend the money on a feasibility study?
Yeah, feasibility, we could do it ourselves. Well, I mean, from what you just mentioned, we already know the answer to those questions. Kind of salty, yeah. I'd rather use that money to build a building or a classroom.
Okay, so finally, our CIP contains an analysis of our debt. You'll see that spanning pages 20 through 22. And on 21, we talk about our debt service ratio. That's an important measure. We look at our population group and see that we are at about 4%, while our benchmarks are about 8%. So, it's the debt compared to their total expenses, expenditures. And so, that is telling us that we do have some capacity to take on additional debt in the future, which is helpful as we look at some of these larger school needs down the road. There are no proposed financings in this CIP, but that will likely change as we begin working through the schools' large requests. And at this point, I'll stop here for questions. Are there any follow-up information you'd like us to come back to you at your next meeting with to help facilitate your discussion?
Knowing it was not an, at the moment, accurate number, Amy, the fund balance, when we talked about it when we got our audit report.
Yeah, at the...
But looking at some of these debts that we have, some that we're going to make the final payment in next year or a year from now, and they're relatively small payments, 147, 132, and maybe some others, those just caught my eyes.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we just go ahead and pay that off?
We've talked about that.
Something we're actually discussing, that's part of some discussion we had with our financial consultant, that may be part of the strategy that we, one of the options that we look at to provide even more capacity, so.
We got what, then? We owe $7,600 on, you know, that's all we have left.
Right. One of the things they've asked us for, that I've got to pull together for them, are all of the debt agreements, because some of that debt, you'll have some prepayment penalties, and so, we need to consider that before we decide to go that route.
Just a question.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
We're going to turn around and borrow some more money, can we borrow a little more, or see what might, you know, talking about a year, so?
Another option we've talked about is refinancing and pulling it together as one debt, and refinancing it. That's another way to try and lower our rate, but it's, we have several things that we are looking at with debt to try and create that capacity.
Right, and these leases you got, they're not negotiable?
Uh, no, but those leases are fairly short, so I don't anticipate having those very long anyway. That's probably not something that we would be able to combine.
Does the lease term start after that?
It's possible, and a lot of times they, like the E-911, they do that renegotiation. And those lease payments are typically, they do like a five-year, and so, yeah, they usually renegotiate after every five years, and they try to get a better terms. But that's something that would be difficult. I don't think we would be able to combine that with our other regular debt. Those have very defined requirements and funding streams, so.
Do we have a purchase option at the end of the lease?
I'd have to look in, I'd have to look at that. Those were pretty much managed by the 911 and agreed upon by the 911 board, so I don't know which, exactly what those terms are.
And if we did buy it, would we bind obsolete equipment?
I don't know. That's something we can investigate if you're interested.
Needs more 2% money. What is the going rate?
It really depends on the terms, but right now, I mean, we can get a fairly, very good rate, favorable rate, probably under 4%. They're very competitive right now. The feds don't seem to be interested in increasing the rates this year, so...
They have USDA, they got the zero money on it?
Something we can tap into. Those are very sensitive to timing and when they're available, so it just depends on when we're ready to borrow. That's something that we might be able to look at and see if there are any available options there.
Why don't we make our schedule match that, if it's zero money?
Well, that's possible. Right, and that's something, again, that'll probably be another option that we talk about with financial consultant as we develop some packages, package options for you all to consider.
Is the maximum benchmark mark, is that government commission recommendation for a county our size or something like that?
It is, yeah. It's recommended by the office budget.
Population group, that 8%, that comes from them as well, or is that something...
8% just happens to be the average of our benchmark counties. They're running around 8%, and our number is at 4%.
So, that's what I was looking at. So, we're, we got about 14.8 million. If that comes to 4%, just double that and see that we can't do a whole lot of what we wanted to, what we're talking about.
The 8% is just, is just a benchmark. The government of county principals cap it at 15%. You don't want to get that high, so, you know, somewhere around 8% is sort of what we're seeing for counties our size.
All right, you got anything else to add?
I don't.
So, we're voting on the 1920 tonight, or the 20.
We're not, we're not voting on any of it tonight. I'll be bringing it back to your meeting on the 15th for adoption and approval. This is just to present it tonight and answer any questions and gather any additional information you might like to have before voting on it. Would you like to hear from PCC at your next meeting about that feasibility study? Or is there some more information you'd like me to send out to the board related to that?
Well, if they aren't familiar with it, they'd want to hear it. I mean, I think I understand it, but I'm from a different point of view, but...
You think the feasibility study is worthwhile?
That 50-odd thousand?
54,000.
I don't. I think we can do that anyhow. Doesn't take much to figure that.
I would hold off on it if we're not going to do it. I mean, like I said, what are we going to get construction costs for now, when we don't know if we're going to do it now, ever, 10 years, five years?
It would require most likely a bond to do something that large.
What needs there?
A bond financing.
I don't know about it. That would be the bottom line of a...
Yeah, I think we just need to figure out how to pay for it. I think we've got a pretty good idea.
And I mean, we have a debt consultant that helped us, so if it's something that you want to see as an option, I mean, that's the point of having a debt consultant, is to give you options.
We're talking about two different things, always, debt consultant or feasibility study.
The debt consultant will tell you if you can...
Debt consultant is going to be a...
You can bill whatever the feasibility study tells you that you want.
I was really, debt consultant, we're already in that, yeah.
Right, but I guess I'm trying to say, you know, if it's something that you want to consider, and, you know, the debt consultant's going to tell you if you can afford it or not.
So, going to study is putting the...
Not the study.
Carpe before the horse, because if we go ahead and they tell us it's going to cost 20 million, we don't know if we're going to have 20 million, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
The problem is, we don't really have a good number to give the debt consultant. We have $32 million estimate from the school, from PCC, which we can use to put into the model and use that as an option, but the feasibility study is crucial. You know, you've really got to have...
Was PCC part of the facility study? We know if they have open space, if they're using it, if they're to capacity on enrollment, are they busting at the seams, do they have rooms that aren't being used, buildings?
Those are some of the questions that the feasibility study would answer. You know, it would look at, like, you know, the need, do they already have existing space that they can use? Those are, those are types of things that they would look at.
You mean, tell me, that facilities person can't tell us that they got an empty room?
Why can't we ask Dr. Senegal to come?
I will have her come back for your next meeting.
Okay. Any more you want to talk?
Nothing more from me. Let me know if there are other, if there's other information I can bring back between now and then, or have available to you on the 15th. I'd be glad to do that.
Oh, well, this has anything to do with it or not, now? Where are they at with facilities for the kids that are going to the community college from the high school? They were talking about space for that, and I see some kind of classrooms being put over there, but you got, are they addressing this? Did I miss it in here?
That's on page 14. There's a line there, the early college pod building. You have funded $161,740 in your current budget, which is what you're seeing on the ground there.
I thought we had funded something for that.
Yes, but now...
So, that's what we're seeing, what they're doing now.
That's right, over by that building.
Okay.
And then, you have an annual payment on that for five years of $79,000. Five years, yeah. So, this upcoming fiscal year will mark your first year after you've made that initial purchase.
I got you. I noticed that going on over there, and I was thinking we had funded something, but I actually thought they were going to add on to a building they had. I didn't realize they were fixing to make, and of course, I understand why they probably want it separate, probably needs to be separate. You got, you know, younger people over there.
I think the pod is going to be a whole lot cheaper than bricks and mortar, too.
Yes. Yes.
All right, chairman's report, I don't have anything tonight. Have you got anything?
No, sir.
Okay, any commissioners got anything you want to bring up?
Got a good opening day at the, for the baseball complex out here with lots of kids Saturday.
Yeah, it got renamed, sir, tomorrow.
It did?
That'd be an introduction to Jordan Carter.
That'd be an improvement. Put me in his will. That'd be good.
I apologize for that.
I would like to recognize Mr. Rick Bruton from, he's our local Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Representative here in Person County, and he's a frequent visitor, but just wanted to acknowledge his presence in the audience tonight. And I want to know who's next for surgery.
Hush.
Tell me.
Well, I might get a stint or two, but I don't think...
We got three down and two to go. Have any volunteers? Just kidding, sorry.
Okay, have a motion to adjourn?
So, motion.
All in favor?